I call meeting to order, the number 11, by 30 p.m. meeting. And before we take the roll, are there any veterans in the audience tonight? You don't have to be shy, but it's okay. If there's none, or if you just don't want to admit that, I just want to say thank you for your service because today is Veterans Day. So, thank you. Okay.
Any birthday?
Here.
Chris Freeman? Heather Klannerman?
Here.
Slint Moses?
Here.
Anne Paulson?
Here.
Amy Loswansen?
Here.
Ed Sire?
Here.
Loswansen?
Here.
Tricia Tuck?
Here.
And we have forms to have taken.
... certified for the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands. Ovation.
Is there any agenda order or approval revision at all? Anybody? Hearing none?
Amy, I just think we might want to point out that there will be an old school board retreat tonight.
Yes, we have, one of our members is ill, and so we're going to wait until everybody can be here to do that. So, we're going to postpone it, and then be a discussion later for the board to decide when it will be. But we'll let people know when they know. Thank you. Recommendations and commendations, we have one.
Katie Krueger. Come on down. The Board of Education of the School District of the Menominee area recognizes Katie Krueger for becoming a Certified Education Technology Leader. This certification assures her to possess a deep understanding of existing emerging technologies that can be used to transform the education environment for our students.
So, for anybody who needs a translation on that, Katie has spent a lot of time over the last several months obtaining the special certification. We're very lucky to have Katie in our school district, and this award that, or this certification received just as another level of expertise. Not all schools are able to say they have someone of that caliber. So, good job, Katie.
Who issues the certification?
Katie will issue the certification.
State Cosin is the consortium of school networking. It basically can replace having an administrative degree. So, people who work in the technology field that don't have a background in education can not go back to college with an education degree, but get that certification. So, on my side, coming from education, it proves that I have the technical ability.
Katie, do you have a highlight in these tonight? I see some little kiddos out there in green. I couldn't ask them from now.
You bet. Welcome, everyone, from Nap Elementary School. I see that Mrs. Humphrey is here. On Miss Weber.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Chris Monody, the principal, and I'd like to introduce Laura Weber with us this evening. And she was formerly our second grade teacher, but with the addition of our intervention piece, she is now our full-time interventionist slash instructional coach for our teachers in the building, and works with all of our students every day in the building. So, I'm going to let her take over from here.
Before Mrs. Weber gets started, let's do two things. First of all, students, go ahead and take about five steps back till you get by those tables. Okay, good. Do you need your journals? Okay, grab those. And then also, any parents or anybody else who might want a picture, please feel free to come back here. You're absolutely welcome to come back here and take any pictures.
This is Weber.
Excellent, go ahead.
So, this year we have a literacy smart book is writing. So, we're focusing on our overall writing, and then especially on elaboration. And we are going to showcase all the different ways that we're using writing across different curriculums. And some students today also have their own personal composition notebook. So, we purchased these for each student at our school to use in addition to writer's workshops. So, this is their personal journal. They have decorated them, and they can use them for lots of different things. Their own, kind of like a diary, but in lots of different ways they're using them. And we'll show, the kids will show you how they are doing that. Okay, so, we have Crystal Almond. She is a kindergartner, and she has her science journal to share with you today. And so, the first unit inherent for science is on trees. So, she has some entries to share with you today. So, what did we learn about our schoolyard trees? Well, how are these different? Yep, so she has an example of a tooth leaf up there. Now, what did you find at our school? And you found it right here, right? And that's in her journal too.
Too late during my class.
And then this is Hattie Cropp. She is a first grader. And the first writing unit in first grade is narrative writing or small moment stories. So, Hattie has a small moment story from when she was younger to share with you today.
Since I built my playhouse, after an interview by Hattie. When, when I was two, my daddy built my playhouse. My mom bought the wood. We built my playhouse. Then I got to play in my playhouse. We played games. And it was very fun. I was done playing. I had to take a nap. And I got finished with my nap. I went back to my playhouse. I started to play. I had to take my nap. And the nap made me tired. I took a nap again. And I woke up. I started to play again. I was very tired again, but I still played.
And this is Reagan Jackson, a second grader. And she's going to show you how she's using that personal writing journal.
Today we have my dad. Today we celebrated Olivia's birthday. She bought M and M cookies. They were yummy. I did ABC now. I was not a hungry. I had a great day.
So, that was one example of how Reagan was using it more of like a diary or journal entries. How else can you use it, Reagan? Yeah, to get her thoughts out. And kind of reflects, you can write about your day, or your weekend, right? You can use some sketching. So, very personal to them on what they feel is their needs. And we have Kail Hoffman, a third grader. And he's going to show you how he actually uses his writing and math. So, last week, the third graders are working on this application problem. The school ballet recital begins at 12:17 p.m. and ends at 12:45 p.m. How many minutes long is the ballet recital? So, Katie, want to share with us what you did to solve this problem?
First, I used arrow way. We just take a number, then make an arrow, put in plus, minus, divide, or times symbol. Then that put a number, then that gets into another number. So, I plus three to get to, I did that 12:17, and I got plus three to 12, 20. Then plus 25, and it equals 20 plus 25 equals 45. So, I got 12:45. Then I wanted to challenge myself to do arrow way. I, I mean, number line. And I started at 12:17. And I plus three, did that to 12, 20. Then I counted by five, 12:45. And in my words, saying the problem, I needed capital letters. I did a period, and every given minute, I put in I, M, I, N, dot.
So, even use writing in math. And this is Penelope Awesome. She's a fourth grader, and she's going to share how she's using her personal writing journal. As you can see, she decorated her cover very nicely. How do you usually use your?
Depending on the use of the L I F M, it's really difficult. And we have to test, and we start writing in our journal. Put some cards on our board days, because I'm in a late, late bathroom again, or three days.
So, the one that you're going to share with us is about your favorite season.
My favorite channel is because my grandparents have worked in massive buildings in my house. We take our old clothes and take garbage bags and stuff with garbage bags. All of these, then we put the garbage bags in our old clothes and put our mess on the walls. Then we put our long stick through our new bed and talk to kids in there. Then we sweep it in the ground, all the kids. It's also my favorite time because I'm, and we like to hide when we have to scare them. Also, we put a little garbage bin, and that's when we try not to touch it.
And then she has one more to share with you. So, on Unity Day, I happened to be in fourth grade during the mindful writing time. And Penelope wrote this poem, and so I want her to share with me because I love it so much.
And this is on your bedroom, right? It's a dream. I wrote that because I'm my mom's bedroom. She has that sign.
And next, we have Trey Rogers, a fifth grader. He's got some narrative writing to share with you, the first unit in fifth grade. So, another small moment story, and he's going to share the beginning of a story since it's so long. You have a personal writing goal, right?
Yeah. And that, my goal is that I would have to elaborate my stories for them. And I'm reading my story, first time playing chariot. I pulled the card out open. Yes, I'm finally wanting to get a game. I paused. Well, science supermario, I did three yes. My yes was running along the box. It stands a couple hundred's tall, and it's about two pencils thick. Some yeses close, mine doesn't. All yeses, you put special cards in to play games. Yeah, just pull up the game stop and we're heading to the door. You don't know whether you'll be able to buy anything, my brother said almost personally. No, I know. I got that fifty dollar gift card, remember? I said, "Tell him." Well, still, it could be expensive. He said, "Don't feel it." Are you guys coming with my mom now? I completely forgot she was there. Yes, of course, why wouldn't I? I thought that would be fair to say. Yeah, yeah, welcome. He shot a looking head inside. I showed him. What did I do to the little of that book? I thought, whatever it is, it's probably not important. So was that, I hid inside. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out on such a cold, wintry night. That warmed my heart to hear those stories. Okay, Steve Rambinatev, Mesa, and Emma. What do you have for us tonight?
So, well, first, we're going to talk about sports. And football is laying before ground in Marshville. And football obtained the BRC Conference Champion. And girls cross country held their title from last year, and were also the BRC Champions. And Paige Anderson competed in the WIAA Division One Girls Cross Country, and she finished 68th in, or of 190 runners. And most fall sports are done, but winter sports meeting was very successful.
And then in clubs and organizations, so Student Council, we created three year-round committees. So, the first one is Student Voice, and that's a committee to take the opinions of the student body, and really try to get changes made that reflect what the students want. And we're doing this by holding focus group meetings once a month during ELT, where students can come, share their opinions. It will be, it'll kind of just be like a forum to discuss opinions about issues that we currently have going on in our school. Right now, we're going to focus on dress code and getting student input on that so that we can make changes that really reflect what the students have in mind. And then we also have a finance committee. So, we have a grant program at the high school through Student Council, and our finance committee will be working to look over all of the applications that we get from that grant forum. That was a bad word, but sorry. And then we also have a school spirit committee that will work on really boosting morale within our students and finding little things to make every day better for all of the students at the high school. And then DECA and National Honor Society hosted the Trigger Cam on Halloween, which was a success, and they collected over 100, or 1,000 non-perishable food items that they will now donate to stepping stones. And then Spanish Club is having their Taco John's fundraiser tonight, actually. So, you guys should all stop by after the meeting and support Spanish Club.
So, for events, we have International Credit Union Day, and this was very successful. Wisconsin Credit Union hosted this event, and we handed out popcorn to students. And then, well, I work there, so I said "we." But they handed out popcorn to students, and they made them more aware of financial literacy. So, during Unity, or excuse me, Unity Day, the students really enjoyed the atmosphere. And the videos and the discussions throughout the weeks really enlightened the students at all levels, and made them more wary of bullying. So, job after Zabowski. Moving on to Mr. McMahon's Environmental Biology and Ms. Hubert's Science classes, they worked at the environmental site, and they removed invasive species and cleared out an entire section along the driveway and the road. They also continued the annual buckthorn and honeysuckle removal on campus. And this year, they focused on the hill near the tennis courts. The students cleared a lot of the area, and this benefited the community and the environment, which is great.
So, then moving on to our grant program. So, like I mentioned before, Student Council has a grant program. And over the last month, we've been able to give out several grants. So, we gave one grant for $250 to Mr. Menominee, which is a charity hosted at the high school by DECA. And we also gave $300 in grants to Game Club, which is a club at the high school that really works on communicating face-to-face rather than over cell phones. So, they have meetings to basically play games, play board games. And so, we gave them $300 to go towards purchasing new games. And then we also received an update on one of the grants that we gave last year. So, Student Council gave the Physical Education and Health Department a grant of $450. And they now are able to purchase a Big Red Mannequin for staff and students to use during skills practice and test out. And this mannequin has LED lights that stimulate the blood flow through the heart, arteries, and brain. This gives instant feedback for students to make corrections if needed. And through an additional grant, they were able to purchase two more Big Red Mannequins. And they hope to add to their Big Red inventory in the future. And I don't know how pictures work, but I added one. I don't know if you guys can see this. Yeah, they want her to share. So, that's all for her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, really long. Community Communications, I did not get anybody that wants to speak. If there's anyone that wants to speak. Okay. I will say, though, that Lady Marshall just gave each of the board members a sheet here, and it's about Feeling Justice and Inclusion, Skills and Strategies for Campus Inclusion in tumultuous times. And it's on November 18th, February to 4 p.m. That's that. So, just want to draw your attention to that. Board Superintendent, Board Member Superintendent, can you take with any board members? Okay, a couple of things. Fall Play on Friday night, very good story. Badger, it was actually based on true facts in history that happened right here in Wisconsin. Also, Tricia and I attended the Legislative Advocacy Workshop on November 2nd, which was a week ago last Saturday, and learned a little bit about what's happening in our state. And we have some information in folders that if anyone wants to see. Some of it's like how enrollment, the transit enrollment are going down because demographics of school-aged children is going down. So, it's not like it's a problem that we can control. So, there's little things like that that, you know, we learn. So, that was very interesting. And I'd also like to take time to thank the staff, the administration, especially at the high school this week for your work this last week on the emergency lockdown. We appreciate that. I heard many, many good reports from people that said they were very, could you know that they felt their students were very safe? So, I want to bring that up to you. And then, if nobody has seen the murals, the new murals that are at the middle school, they're really cool. They're up and running. They're on the, when you walk in, they're kind of on the back wall up on top. Get a chance, check those out. And then, last but not least, there was a breakfast fundraiser this past Saturday. Had a great turnout, waffles, and it was for the music department choir. That's all I have. Dr. Joe?
Okay, just a few things. In addition to the professional development opportunities in the school board convention, again, reminder to give your name to Jamie if you plan to go to that. I want to just mention, like Amy said, kudos to all of the staff at the high school. Mr. Drake, for handling such a difficult situation last Wednesday. Certainly, those are very troubling. However, I think the work that has been done in the district to make sure we have good plans, those plans have been practiced, it definitely went as well as that type of situation can go. We have debriefed at the building level. Tomorrow, we'll be debriefing with the rest of the administrative team. There's always learning lessons we can take from those situations. Also, just kudos to the Menominee Police Department. We really appreciated the very good and strong response we received. I did write a school crossings column about that. It was well-covered in the news media. Appreciate Travis and Duncan News getting that out right away. I know it's kind of a tight deadline, but we think that's important information for our community. On a more positive note, I also attended the Fall Play. My family and I went yesterday. Just a terrific job. Kudos to Mr. Albertson and all the students who are involved. It was very well done. And then with the football team competing this Friday, Level Four in playoffs, in the event that they're able to win and beat Menasha, which I'm sure everyone is hoping and planning for, that would put them in the state championship game. So, I'm sure Coach Labuda wants nothing to do with talking about any kind of state championship game at this point. However, plans do, do need to be made. It's a tight turnaround. The state championship game would be Friday, November 22nd at 10 a.m. And it's been a while since Menominee's been down there. I think this will probably be the first time as the Mustangs that they would be in the state championship game. The past history has been that the district has closed school on those days. And we've talked about it as a leadership team with a number of people, not only students, but also staff members that we anticipate would want to attend that game. I really don't think having school is in the best interest of our district. I don't think there will be enough supervision. I think there would be a ton of absences. I have also talked to some former administrators from the school district about some of the challenges and reasons for why that had happened in the past. So, at this point, it would be our plan to cancel school on the 22nd, and then work out a plan for staff. Our teachers always can use additional self-directed professional development. And the Professional Development Day scheduled for November 27th is not a day that hourly staff were scheduled to work. We would like to offer the hourly staff the opportunity to attend that Professional Development Day in the event that there is no work on November 22nd. So, I guess that's where we're at on that. And good luck to the football team and everyone else who's involved with the activities. Most of the other activities are now jumping into the winter season. Any questions or comments on that?
I applaud your decision. Is there anything your board needs to do for taking that?
I do not believe there is.
Okay, next is revenue and expenditure reports for the month ending October 2019. Take it away, Leah.
Okay, the first report we're going to take a look at is the expenses by function. If you can tell a little bit about that. So, year-to-date for the month ending October 19, we're at 19.81% spent compared to 16.65% spent in October of 2018. Now, this is just the general fund ten. So, expenses are up. There is a few one-time billing expenditures that happened this year compared to last year. But also, the month of October was a three-payroll month. And so, we have additional expenses with that. Last year, it was November that was a three-payroll month. So, just variances with that. Same for Fund 27, expenses are up 18.68% compared to 16.02. And then Food Service Fund 50, we're at 20.48% compared to 20.31. So, just slightly higher with Food Service. Does anyone have any questions on that report? Okay, the next one is our expenses by object. If you'd like to open the ads. For this report, we're looking at all funds. So, the total for the month ending October 2019, we're at 19.23% compared to last year. At this time, it was 16.94%. So, again, expenditures are up. We did have that three-payroll month, and then bill timing plays a factor in that. Any questions on that report? And then lastly, the revenue report for October. At this time of year, there's still minimal activities just starting out the school year, really. We received in our utilization aid payment that comes in in September. And then you'll see we have some local revenues that have come in, and we're giving grant money as well. So, for the total fund ten received in through the month of October is just over 3.2 million. And then in Fund 21, our gift donation account, we've received in $40,750.64. In Fund 27, Special Education, we don't have any revenues received in yet. Our first special ed state aid payment. Our first special ed state aid payment comes in towards the end of November, and then we will have some local revenues to receive in there as well. Anyone have any questions?
Any none? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it. Okay, next is the monthly wonder report, and that's mainly informational. Any questions on that?
Amy, along with the monthly play report, I would just like to report on the changes that we've made with our substitute compensation. That and our other changes with how we're handling subs at the high school appear to be having a very positive impact on our ability to fill subs. In the reports that we've seen, the, our fill rate was much higher in October than it had been in previous months. So I think that's been a positive change, and we'll continue to track that moving forward.
Anybody, anyone have any questions? Moving right along. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as noted. David?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or any questions? Any none? Okay, we do not have an action agenda. We'll just put it in there just in case somebody wanted to remove something or if we had something that came up. So we'll skip over that. And then, we're down to discussion items, policy review, plan for an embedded associate degree program at MHS.
So, Board Members, you all know that we're working hard on the strategic plan. There's different pillars, five different pillars. And I appreciate the work that Brian's done, the initiative he's taken to work with CBTC. So Brian, go ahead and take it away and talk to the board a little bit about the work you've done.
Yep. So as we take a look at the items identified within that first pillar, one of the things that we've targeted is taking a look at what are the existing dual credit opportunities that are currently available? And can we possibly expand some of those where it makes sense to do so? As we started looking at several of the courses that we currently have available where students are earning both high school credit and post-secondary credit through CBTC, we started to see a fair amount of overlap in the business management program that CBTCs have. So following up from our summer academy conversations, we decided to investigate what would it take to implement an embedded associate's degree program? The idea behind this is, in the time that students are enrolled at Menominee High School, they could take a combination of courses that we offer on-site, take a look at some of the summer academy opportunities that are available with those programs, and then also potentially utilize some CBTC staff in areas that we don't have staffing in place or staff with those certifications. Basically, what that comes up to is we have the ability in a four-year window of time that a student could not only earn their high school diploma at Menominee High School, but also earn that two-year associate's degree through CBTC. During the school year, you know, as you're aware, we have students who will take course options or start college now courses. This fits in line with that. During summer school programming, classes that students take are enabled for summer school reimbursement. So out of pocket for students, there would not be a cost for doing this. We would be able to account to students, you know, for the classes that we offer, but then also then if we utilize a CBTC staff member, it would be the tuition rate that we pay for that much series of what we do with early college credit or start college now programming. In your background, I included a draft of what this program could look like. There's color coding included in the one that you have. Items that are highlighted in green are classes that we either currently offer for transcripted credit or classes that we would look at transcripting. So some of the later ones in Year Three and Four are ones that you can see, there are some notes in one of them, or, you know, when we take a look in Year Two, ones that either we are working towards transcripted credits or we've identified that we would be able to work towards. There are some courses that we would be unlikely that we would have the capacity to have a staff member with the certification necessary to teach. The one example that I could point to would be in Year Two, the business law course. In order to teach that class, you have to have a law degree. CBTC would provide an instructor for that class. Other ones later on, those are things that we could look at. We've identified what, you know, kind of the balance would look like as we go forward. But again, what this would amount to is, at the end of a student's four years of school here in Menominee, if they follow this pathway, they would earn not only their high school diploma, but have that two-year associate's degree. And then, CBTC also has several agreements with the University of Wisconsin system for guaranteed transfer credits. So it really does leverage our time here on campus in the district, time through CBTC, and then if they want to move forward with that. So really, our next steps in this process after this evening would be to continue to further our conversations. This is something that we would look to bring with our program and in-course proposals that would come back, you know, in later November. And then, in December, we do that process on a annual basis. But we wanted to talk through this a little bit this evening, just to get everybody up to speed as to how the conversations are going. And then, you'll notice that, you know, again, this would be a nice blend of summer programming as well as school year programming, and then also leveraging classes, several classes that we currently have in this capacity. Probably looking at that 12 to 15 on the low end. Most districts that have explored this, they usually end up capping at above 20 to 24 students, depending on what the local policy is as far as class sizes and things like that. And a student would have an opportunity to join the program if they didn't elect to right away on entry as a freshman. They could join the program later on, but they may not complete all courses by the time they leave. Maybe we need to do a year at CBTC or another technical college.
Any idea how much interest there is? Do you get a sense of, I mean, at least 15 students, you think?
Well, I would say, you know, it's hard to tell exactly what that is. The reason we're talking about this now is so that we would be able to then roll this out with the registration process that the high school has. So we would start with conversation with current eighth grade students as they do the course enrollment process. Informational night, get this on the docket for the curriculum night that the high school will have in January, and then we'll go through that route. When you take a look at the courses that are highlighted in green, those are classes that we currently run and have full sections of. It would potentially involve opening some of those courses up to students a little bit earlier if they had interest in an instructor.
I have a follow-up to that. What if you get so many students that want to do it? Way more than 15 or 20, then what's your thought on that?
Well, you know, so that's a good question. You know, the other districts who have done this, River Falls and Eau Claire, you know, their first years, they, this is about what they get in that first year. You know, we would have to make a decision at that point in time. You know, would we choose to try and fill more sections? It would be part of our, you know, registration process like we do when we have more students sign up than we currently have staff before. We have to, you know, weigh that at that point.
Kevin?
This is awesome, in my opinion. So is CBTC, would they be the entity to grant the associate's degree license then?
Yep. Yep, so upon completion, it would be no different than had the student gone through the program at CBTC. So they'll have their Menominee High School diploma, and they'll have their Chippewa Valley Technical College diploma. That says that they've earned a two-year business management associate's degree. And again, the reason why we chose business management as a starting point is that's the area that we have the largest number of transcripted credits that align with an existing program. You know, it's not to say that we wouldn't look at other program areas in the future, but this would be a good start.
This is a great start. I look at this as, you know, a stepping stone for maybe some students if they do pursue a four-year degree in helping with the student loan that students have in the future and just even giving students an opportunity in high school to obtain an associate's degree. I mean, this is, to me, this is a, it's a win-win for, I think, Menominee, the districts, and CBTC, so.
Yeah, the other piece that we're investigating, CBTC also has what they refer to as an embedded technical diploma. So it may not be a full associate's degree, but we're investigating the areas that we are relatively close. Or in some cases, may be a class away from a technical diploma. We take a look at some of our tech ed areas. Machine tool is one area that we're very close, you know, offering that. And the course that they're working on right now would probably get us in line for having that as well.
And that may also help with some of the shortages areas for workers, so.
So CNA is an example where we have a CNA academy in place at the high school, and we're very close to having students be able to complete the items or the coursework that will allow them to be on the waitlist for the program as well.
I love it. Good job.
Jim?
Are there any costs associated with this, like saying with CBTC, if a professor comes in to teach law or Excel or whatever, do they pay their time, do we pay their time? How does that work?
Yep, so there are costs associated with it. So if a CBTC instructor comes, it's the tuition rate that we would pay. They provide the instructor. Most of these classes, the class, the sophomore year, and we're not yet finalized whether or not the two classes or three classes, I should say, the third year, whether or not those would be onsite at Menominee High School or they'd be at the CBTC campus here in town. But if CBTC provides the instructor, we pay the tuition rate, would be the cost associated per student with that. And we run those calculations. And actually, we already pay those costs for students who elect to do the Start College Now program, the CBTC. It just would be part of this program.
See, and that's part of, part of an equity plan. You know, we do have students that are already doing some of this, but to make it more accessible and bring it in our, our school district, we think it'll be more accessible than it is now. So those costs could go up, even though we are paying some of those college courses now. If more kids get in, you know, there's going to be an additional expense, but we think it's an equity, an equity plan.
I too think this is wonderful. But we have a lot of programs going on, and I'm just trying to see how this fits in with everything. From what I'm gleaming from your discussion is that this is kind of a pinnacle. This is what, you know, what best, the highest kind of programming that we can provide in conjunction with Chippewa Valley, so. And then, the other programs are kind of a step down, are the popular programs like our machine, working machine area and the CNA stuff. So, and you're saying you're looking at trying to boost them up to this level?
So I think I understand what you're asking, Dan. This would be, I would say they are all very high demand and high-quality programs. You know, an associate's degree is, as you're aware, laid out in a sequence of courses that allows students to earn at that degree, where an embedded technical diploma would fall more in line with a certification within an area. So there are students who will be on campus within a program at CBTC who, through a series of courses, will earn technical diplomas, you know, in maybe Route Two, earning an associate's degree, or maybe that's what they went there to do was to get that technical diploma or that specific certification. So I think, you know, they're, they're all very quality programs and things that we would like to see, you know, that they would add value to the diploma students here, we get here at Menominee High School. And in many cases, the courses that our kids are taking are, you know, in line with those things. So it's documenting and aligning it with those programs and those certifications that students get at that technical college level. And then, if students can earn those here, that allows them to take that next step potentially sooner, or, you know, hopefully for them, it's more accessible to them.
Yeah, I agree that all of our programs are high-quality. I'm just, for the outcomes for the students, this, this one here is going to be a very, very good outcome for our students. Certifications are also good, but probably this one is going to have more impact for those students to complete this, is what I'm seeing.
Well, yeah, it's hard to say, you know. There are many different programs and certifications and degrees. This obviously would end up with a degree, but depending on what your goal is, you know, the degree may or may not be needed or even appropriate. I know there are some students, you know, they'll go through a welding program or something like that, and, you know, it's pretty amazing what they're able to do after getting that welding certification. So it's, that's kind of apples and oranges, I would say.
I think a technical diploma is more specific. So it's like machine tool, welding, diesel mechanic, whereas I would get associate's degree, the specific management is broader. So that's how I could argue, the technical diploma is very specific, whereas the associate's degree is a little bit broader. I think that's kind of what you're, from my interpretation, what you're kind of looking for.
Yeah, that's, exactly right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Leah?
Yeah, it was already kind of asked a little bit, but speaking of kind of the equity part of it, Brian, I know Jim had asked what the cost. Is there, like with the CNA Academy, correct me if I'm wrong on this, there is some minimal cost to the student, like books or some other testing or something like that. Is there any anticipated cost for this program to the students?
So those are the pieces that we are working on right now. I, at this point, you know, for example, you can see some of the classes that students can substitute in are some of the advanced placement classes. And students would have to not only take the class, but also achieve a particular level associated with that. So when you take a look at, you know, tests that kids pay for versus ones that, you know, that they don't have to pay for, some of those types of things, yep, there would be some costs associated that way. As far as the class itself, the answer is no on that. And then, the books, that is a piece that we cover when the students do that through the program, yes.
Anybody else? Anne? Yep. Is that what you're talking about with the work keys assessment score?
No, actually, when you look in the school year list, you can see, you know, I'll use Year Four, for example. At the last two bullet points, it says AP Language or AP Psych or AP Statistics. So that's a class that the students would enroll and they would take at the high school. And then, you can see down, down in the bottom, there are some requirements that are listed as far as they have to earn a score of a three or four. The work keys assessment, in the past, that has been a state-required assessment. However, this year, it's no longer required in the state of Wisconsin, which is good that our students have less standardized assessment that they have to take. At the same time, starting with this academic year, CBTC allowed substitution of a work keys assessment at a certain level for some coursework. And that's been something around the state that has happened. So I could see us layering back in for students in a program like this or other reasons, the opportunity to take that assessment. And then, we would have to determine whether or not there's a cost that would be included in the cost of the program, or it's something that the family would be responsible for some of those details. But like the key courses, the students are But like the EP courses, the students aren't charged for the course, but if they want to take the test, potentially see if they can have that for college substitution in those pieces, and if that's a piece that they're going to be.
Okay, thank you.
So just to lay out the larger vision on this, so last meeting, the board was presented with a timeline. Every year we go through the process of determining what's going to be offered in terms of courses. That timeline was shared with the board last meeting. Coming up here, the board's going to see, you know, the list of recommended opportunities, and that's why it's important to have this discussion, because unlike some years where it's, you know, pretty much year to year, a lot of similar classes other than a few tweaks, you know, this will have an impact on what's going to be offered to the students. So you'll be seeing that in the coming months, and then from there, you know, we have the student registration, decide what classes will run and which ones won't, and then we move into staffing, then budgeting, and then the whole deal. So this is just one more step in that ladder.
Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, next, annual free and reduced meals eligibility report. Leah?
Okay, so our official free and reduced meal count date is October 31st. We break the countdown by school building. So overall, for October 31st, this year compared to last year, it's up 1.53%. This report or this count is important because it determines whether or not we can apply for certain grants, and then also it's used to determine grant funding. For example, Title I, the same schools that qualified last year, once again qualify this year. Oaklawn is getting close. In order to qualify, you need to, the school building has to be at least 35%. So we can, we are allowed to count each month, so we'll watch that closely, and if it does go over, same with the high school, the high school's just under that 35% as well. So we'll continue to monitor it and see if either of those go over, so. Are there any questions on that?
David?
Does any change? Downsville and High School both had some big changes. Any changes in the criteria to head to meet, or is this just demographics of the population in the school that changed that?
As far as I know, just the demographics of the school, I know like the high school, the enrollment is up with the high school, and also the number of students that qualify is also up. Downsville is same enrollment, but there's a few less individuals that qualify. So it just, it varies from month to month depending on when applications come in and such.
Dan? So Downsville, a small number of students, a couple of students are going to show a larger percentage change.
Correct, correct. Well, it is increasing, you know, the need is increasing, but it's good to see that families are reaching out and making application, you know, getting the services they need.
David?
What is the difference to, say, at Oaklawn, from 35% and being eligible for it? How does that actually affect the school?
Kristen can probably answer that better than I can, but if, they then qualify for intervention services in reading and math and such.
Brian, give in there to that.
So that's the big piece when we take a look at Title I eligibility as far as access to the grant funding, federal dollars that come for that. That being said, just because a building qualifies doesn't necessarily mean that the district sees a large increase from one year to the next. It just means we can utilize those funds in that building where previously we were not able to.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Leah. Discuss parameters for developing the 2020, 2021 school calendar.
I know it feels strange to say 2020, 2021, but it is that time of year. We're already getting some questions. You know, different groups need to plan things ahead. So we will be meeting with the teacher QIC groups in early December. I appreciate Jamie kind of took our current calendar, rolled it forward just to see what it would look like. And, you know, we've had a lot of calendar discussions over the years. I think we've settled on a calendar that seems to be working pretty well. I think there's a few things for discussion next year. You know, every year's a little bit different. I don't like the rollover calendar and how it brings back the staff for one extra day in June, so I'd like to come up with a solution for that, whether it be moving a day or moving a few days, but I'd like to get staff input. But before we go to the staff and start sharing ideas, do board members have any particular feedback they'd like to share on the development of next year's school calendar? Okay, thank you.
Next, set date for mid-year budget hearing.
So the last few years, we've had a mid-year budget hearing. Pretty much in attendance has been the board and the administrative team. We can still do it, we're happy to do it, but just wanting to know if the board would still like to do that, and if you do, would you like to do it corresponding date, basically half hour before the January 13th meeting?
I would still like to do it, I think just for information purposes, if nothing else, I'm going to be up to it.
Consensus to keep with the table?
We're happy to do it. So just do it right before the board meeting again? Great, thank you.
Okay, and then next is eligibility for next meeting dates, board committees and reports. We do have a meeting on the 25th and also the following meeting in December 9th.
Yes.
We also, in those times, we need to figure out when we want to reschedule retreat, and then unfortunately, we do have to schedule an expulsion hearing as well.
So we'd like to have the expulsion hearing on November 25th to try to keep it convenient for board members' calendars. If we could start that expulsion either at 4:00 or 4:30. In the event that it runs into the board meeting, the board does have the ability to deliberate after the board meeting and go back into closed session for the purpose of those deliberations. My recommendation for the expulsion hearing, to make sure it meets all the state statutes in terms of timelines, would be to have it on November 25th at either 4:00 or 4:30.
Any preference?
I'd say 4:00, just to give, we have plenty of time to figure it out, if everybody can get here.
Yep.
Those can kind of like get.
As long as we have plenty of time.
Okay, so we'll plan 4:00 on November 25th for the expulsion, and then in talking to our consultant from Wasby, he is available on December 9th. So if it pleases the board, we could reschedule the board retreat for December 9th.
Everybody okay with that?
Would you like to keep the regular meeting at 5:30 and just, you know, kind of be a little bit later night? I can't promise an agenda December 9th, but we have tonight. So start at 5:30, get through the board meeting, grab some meeting, and get into the board retreat on December 9th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.